...I state your name, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the same in the government established in the United States and the government established in the State of New Jersey under the authority of the people. Again, I state your name, do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the Office of the Planning Board to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations. Thank you. You're getting yourself into it. Very good. The meeting is brought to order as we'll stand for the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this world, liberty and justice. Lois, can you read the statements certification of the meeting?
Certification of the meeting has been advertised according to Sunshine Law.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Benira.
Here.
Mr. Sealy.
Here.
Mrs. Inogorada.
Here.
Dr. McHenry. Mr. Conti. Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Mrs. Shore. Mr. Corvus. Mr. Bowe.
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria. Ms. Reka.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
Mr. Rinaldi.
Here.
Mr. De Laurenti.
Do I have a motion for the approval in minutes for the November 9th, 2017, and the December 14th, 2017?
Two seconds.
Lois, call the roll.
Mr. Benira.
Yes.
Mr. Sealy.
Yes. Take snowboard.
Mrs. Inogorada.
Take no part.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Reka.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe.
Yes. Chairman's comments. I just want to tell our new members that we need to get certified, and they offer classes. In our packet is the New Jersey Planner, and it offers some dates and locations. You guys could just try to arrange one of them that's convenient and get certified. Correspondence and payment of bills. Anybody have any questions or comments? It's not on the old business. We have the memorialization of PB 2017-08, 59-65 Jan Rome Street. That was the subdivision of the three lots that we voted on. We're just going to memorialize it. Lois, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Benira.
Yes.
Mr. Sealy. Mrs. Inogorada.
I'm staying.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe.
Yes.
Ms. Reka.
Yes.
New business. We have block 9101, lots nine and 10, 630 and 632 Washington Avenue, for a further extension of the preliminary site plan approval through the end of the year, December 31st, 2018.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Allison Casetta from the law firm of Price, Meese, Schulman, and D'Arminio, appearing on behalf of the applicant, JCR Benelli LLC. As you stated, Mr. Chairman, this is a request for an extension of site plan approval. What I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, is just briefly run through the history, the basis for the extension that we're requesting, and then I'd like to offer for the board a principal of the applicant, in case there are any specific questions about what's going on. So, to begin, the applicant is the contract purchaser of the property, which is located on Washington Ave and designated as block 9101, lots nine and 10. On December 13th, 2017, we submitted a letter to the board requesting extension, excuse me, of the preliminary site plan approvals granted to the prior property owner in 2008. I have copies of those resolutions, if the board would like to see them, but just by quick reference. On lot 10, the board approved a mixed-use development, which consisted of 135 residential units, just over 20,000 square feet of retail and restaurant space, and 334 off-street parking spaces. On lot nine, the board approved the renovation of an existing office building. The two projects were assigned the same application number. They were heard by the board on the same night, but for some reason, two separate resolutions were adopted. Again, I have copies. I can certainly mark them into evidence. Should I mark them as A1 and A2?
You got it.
is. Ordinarily, under the municipal land use law, the recipient of preliminary site plan approval will get certain protections for a period of three years. What that means is if the municipality amended zoning ordinance in some way that would affect the development that's already been approved, the applicant is grandfathered in a way. The new amendment will not affect the project that's already been approved. So, for instance, if the township were to change the zoning ordinance to prohibit one of the uses that is a part of this development, this development would still be allowed to be built because it had already been approved, and that protection had been given to the applicant. I'm sure you're familiar with the Permit Extension Act of 2008. That was amended several times after it was initially enacted, and the last time it was amended, it told approvals granted after January 1st, 2007, in all super storm sand deep impacted counties, of which Essex is one, through December 31st, 2016, provided that the polling would not extend the dates of those approvals more than six months beyond December 31st, 2016. I know that's a mouthful, and I will come back to it, but that is a key provision of that statute. So, while the Permit Extension Act was in place, as I said, it was amended several times, but in 2012, there was amendment being considered by the legislature, hadn't yet been adopted. So, the attorney for the prior property owner at that time, I believe, to protect the property and receive these approvals, sends a letter to this board on April 5th, 2012, and he mentioned that the state was currently considering another amendment to this Permit Extension Act, but because it hadn't been enacted, he would like to request an extension of the 2008 approvals. And I have a copy of that letter, and John Mark is A3, and also my letter. And you can see, once you get a copy, attached to that letter are the minutes of the April 12th, 2012 Planning Board meeting, and they confirm that this board voted to grant an extension at that time. Unfortunately, they don't specify the length of the extension, so I'm not exactly sure how long that was good for. In the meantime, the legislature did, in fact, further amend the Permit Extension Act, and it ultimately extended the approvals, as I said, let me back up. It ultimately told the approvals, as I said, through December 31st, 2016, which is just over a year ago. And what happened was it froze the running of that period of protection. So, the Permit Extension Act itself was not an extension, it just stopped the time period from running through December of 2016. So, assuming that the extension that this board granted in 2012 was for at least six months, which I think is a safe assumption, excuse me, I'm not sure why the board would have granted one for shorter than that, because it would really be of no effect. The effect of the final amendment to the Permit Extension Act was to toll the time period through December 31st, 2016, and then let the six months run, which expired on June 30th, 2017. And the point of all of this is, we are now requesting an extension from that date, June 30th, 2017, for a period of 18 months, which brings us to December 31st, 2018. So, it's just under the year from now. And the reason that we're requesting this extension is that the applicant is now in process of purchasing this property. They hope to complete the transaction soon, but once they do that, they need to retain professionals to prepare the site plans and elevations and all the things that go along with a site plan application, and come back to you for final site plan approval. And their intention is to do that before the end of 2018, so this extension would allow them to do that. Just a little bit of statutory language. We are requesting this extension under Section 49G of the Municipal Land Use Law. That section is specific to preliminary site plan approval. The rules are a little bit different when you're dealing with preliminary site plan approval as opposed to final. With final, the board is constrained to certain time periods, but I'll read you the language of this provision, dealing with preliminary site plan approvals. The board may extend the period of protection for such period of time as it determines to be reasonable in the case of a development consisting of not less than 150,000 square feet of non-residential floor area, not less than 100 residential units, or a combination thereof. So, with this project, we do meet that threshold, because as I said, on lot 10, we have 135 residential units, that exceeds the 100, and then we have in addition 20,000 square feet and change of commercial space, so we do fall within that provision. And then Section 49E of the Municipal Land Use Law provides that whenever the planning board grants an extension of preliminary approval pursuant to subsection C, D, or G, G is the one that we're making this request under, the ex, I'm sorry, and if preliminary approval has expired before the date on which the extension is granted, the extension shall begin on what would otherwise be the expiration date, and the developer may apply for the extension either before or after what would otherwise be the expiration date. So, based on that language, we believe that the board has jurisdiction to grant this extension even though the period of protection has already lapsed. Again, that date was June 30th, 2017, so roughly six months ago. But the Municipal Land Use Law gives this board jurisdiction to grant some extension now that relates back to that date. And I think those are all the details that I wanted to give you, so maybe the board has some questions for me, or maybe for Principal of the applicant.
We're extending that the original plan that we approved back in 2008, right?
Yes, yes. Those two resolutions that I passed out, that's what we're asking you to extend.
I have a couple of questions. The original applicant was available, Washington Redevelopment LLC. Then the 2012 extension letter says, the property was owned by J. M. Rilte and 666 Washington Rilte Inc., and now you're saying the firm represents J.C.R. Benelli LLC.
Yes.
Is this the same applicant? Are we dealing with all different people?
No. J.C.R. Benelli is a new applicant. They're currently under contract to purchase this property, so that transaction should be finished within the next month or so, and then they will be entitled on their property.
Okay, so JCR has nothing to do with the original applicant?
No, other than being a successor in title.
The original applicant was Jacobs. Right. I would just ask, Mr. Rinaldi, being none of our members here are our terms, and we had a lot of information just given to us. Is the information provided correct?
Yes.
And is it within our jurisdiction?
Yeah, well, just to give you a little background, Tom was, Tom DiBiase, who's the board attorney, my board guy, was given a member, was sent a memorandum by counsel, by Allison. He went through it. He and I both sat down and went through it. We read the statute. You do have the authority to do this. If it was a, finally, you wouldn't, because it's a preliminary site plan approval, they're going to have to come back to you anyway for the final site plan approval. And at that time, you can make them jump through hoops if you want, it's, you know, up to you. You still have jurisdiction to have them do whatever you want them. So, you do have the authority to do it. And I also think Tom spoke with Frank De Laurenti. Frank is the attorney of Tom.
Before we make a motion, does anybody in the public have a question on this witness? Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to make the motion that we extend this to 18 months for blocks 9101, lots nine and 10.
Someone else have a second?
I just want to make a point that it's been stipulated that the statutory extension expired six months ago, and since 2008, we went through a master plan revision in 2009, doing what right now, no other revision to it. I'm just concerned about, you know, the age and, you know, not having been around when the preliminary site plan approval was adopted. Just don't know how it fits into the current standard.
Tom, look at it, it's consistent.
It's consistent.
I second the motion.
Lois, call the roll.
Can the public make comments?
Dennis.
First of all, in all due respect, we can't hear anything. This is a private conversation in the last six feet up there. Public can't hear anything. You don't need microphones and all that. My question is, I was at the original thing a decade ago and all that, and I have some problems with it. So, even though they extended whatever extension they got before, what I'm trying to hear, their extension expired. Is that not correct back in last year, in June?
Six months, yeah.
Yeah. So, then why are we granting?
Our attorney said it's within our jurisdiction.
For preliminary site plan approval, you could do it backward. You can do it retroactively. You could extend it. And the reason for that is because preliminary is just that, it's preliminary. They still have to come for final site plan approval, and, you know, there could be requirements that, you know, the board can...
But the original applicant, but now they're selling the property. Does it go to the new owner? Is that what they, the original site plan was done?
Sure, it would go to, many people get approvals and then sell the project, so it would go to the new owner.
All right, well, you know, I mean, they should have come in due time. The extension expired, and here we go again, we just, whatever the developers want, they get. They didn't come in on time. It expired six, seven months ago, and yet we say, ah, that's okay, don't worry about the law.
They'll opt in, they can leave the property vacant, or put in a hundred and some odd units, that's up to the board.
Yeah, well, you know, they had 10 years to build it. You know, they got approval 10 years ago, and then there was a subsequent outrageous application for the same property, which thankfully was defeated. But now again, this, you know, here we go, don't worry about it, develop, whatever you want, we'll give you it. Forget the law, forget that you didn't do it on time, but we'll give it to you anyway. It's an embarrassment that the tax bill is down.
It's within our jurisdiction. Our attorney said it's within our jurisdiction. It's legal, but we're done with it.
Well, your attorneys, especially Mr. DiBiase, has been drawn on several occasions in the past year alone. I forget about the fact of the year.
I'm not in favor of the extension. For one thing, you're contemplating a new master plan, which could affect this property one way or another, and we don't know yet. So, for that reason alone, I would not extend it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Jerry DeGersch, I agree. This thing about the master plan has no effect. This is protecting them. Whatever happens is protected, even if there's a change in the zone. So, that's why this is done. Now, I believe, because I've been going through this with zoning board, a preliminary can get up to two years past the expiration. So, it expired last summer, you're asking for 18 months. From the discussions, well, my attorney, I think you can get up to two. On a final site plan, you can get up to three one-year extensions, after the final site plan gives you two years. So, the master plan means nothing in this. This protects them from changing the zone. They're protected by this. If they change the zone, you can't do anything. That's the whole thing. That's the reason that's given, for a site plan. This is preliminary. Like he said, they have to come back to him for a final site plan, and then even after the final site plan, they might be able to get even more time.
Jerry, I don't know if you heard, this was approved in 2008.
That, you understand, it was approved in 2008, but what she said is correct. The state kept on giving extensions. All extensions that were given expired last summer, no matter how long the extensions were. And, but I believe you can get the extra, I'm not sure about that now. That's a good question, because when it ended last summer, I don't know if that included any extensions. I'll be honest with you. That I don't know, but technically, they have to come back for final site plan anyway.
We absolutely do. There's no argument there.
Anybody else in the audience doesn't have a question? Lois, please call the roll.
Mr. Benira.
Yes.
Mr. Sealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Inogorada.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
No.
Mr. Bowe.
Yes.
Ms. Reka.
Yes.
Thank you all for your time tonight. I just want to say that the development of this property is very well overdue.
Yes.
And our client is very excited to work with all of you and finally make it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have review and consent. Redevelopment Plan Ordinance of Mayor Council Adopting Amendments to the Roche Diagnostic Development Plan for 11 Franklin Avenue.
Yes, good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Gene Da Mattelli. I'm Special Redevelopment Counsel for the Township of Belleville. We're here tonight, this is a consistency review of an amendment to the Roche Diagnostic Redevelopment Plan. A quick, very quick background, the plan was originally adopted in August of 2013. It was amended to add uses, retail uses, self-storage uses in December of 2016, and recently, the governing body introduced the ordinance to further amend the redevelopment plan to permit, or to clarify really, the type of uses that would be permitted in the zone in the redevelopment plan, and also to modify some of the signage limitation and criteria. So, again, I'm here to just introduce it. I've reviewed it for the plan for legal consistency with the long-term, the local redevelopment housing law, and it is consistent with that. Here tonight is the township's planner from CME, it's Don Mizell, and he's going to give you a presentation of what this amendment is about, and the directive for you tonight, if the board chooses to do so, is to adopt the resolution finding that the proposed amendment to the redevelopment plan is consistent with the township's master plan. I understand, Mr. Rinaldi, that the chairman, Mr. Benira, had a conflict on prior application, and that's appropriate, with all due respect, I think it's probably just, so I'll introduce Mr. Mizell, who again is from CME, he is the township's planner, to introduce and clarify details what the event is. If you don't have any other questions for me, that's...
Is there something wrong with the microphones?
No, you should be. I have a problem, a slight problem hearing this evening. We received it moments ago. It's a 50-page document, and how are we supposed to intelligently read it, examine it, and hear what we're supposed to? I don't understand why it was given to us this evening with the anticipation of you testifying, but I don't know about the rest of the board, but I'm not ready to vote tonight. So, I don't know what the rest of the board...
I can answer your question just procedurally, what the statute requires, and maybe it's just a matter of the way the dates fall, but this board here was in between, the statute requires a referral to the planning board, as you know, and then the planning board has to make a recommendation for future adoption. What I would suggest is that we hear Mr. Mizell's presentation. I agree with you, there's a lot, we tried to summarize what the nature of the changes are. With all due respect, there are not many, but I understand there's a lot of information there, so maybe you can hear Mr. Mizell's presentation and determine whether we can adjourn it until the next Planning Board meeting, but I would just say that the Planning Board needs to act within a certain period of time. I could do the calculations when I sit down. Needs to act within 35 days of the referral, and when your next hearing, Mr. Rinaldi, falls, you just have to make sure that they're satisfied by that.
With all due respect, you're not the board, and we have to look at this, 50 pages. It was handed to us moments ago, and I know I didn't look at it yet, I'm sure most of us have not looked at it yet, and it's just not fair to do this. You know, there's time constraints, but they hand it to you right during a meeting. I have a problem with it, and I'd like to hear from the rest of the board, what it would like to do.
I totally agree. You know, receiving this as you walk into the meeting to vote on.
Can you figure out the time constraints? Can you calculate when they have to act?
Sure, and would you like to hear from Mr. Mizell? Or, in any event, would you rather just hear and adjourn, or, because I'll have to start while I'm...
Well, so, and I have to come back to next time we hear this, so if everyone can review it, at our, in the next meeting, when we have questions, I'm sure, so remember to, I don't know if you would like to...
Point of order. I just want to let you know that the copy of this meeting agenda that's on the township website has no reference to this part of the hearing, so this is also unknown to the whole community.
Right.
So, I think you might be in violation of OPMA.
One of the things about this document is you have three different plans. You have the plan from 2013, 2016, and then the amendments that I presented. The reason I'm here is because my name is... The reason I'm here is because my name is on the plan, so I signed off on this. Basically, the changes that you're gonna find is that retail convenience store with fuel sales is now defined in this document as a permitted use. Uh, there was a previous definition that was a little flimsy, so we tried to tighten that up, so you'll see that over and over again, because the proposed use for this phase two is a walla, you don't have to call it anything else, it's gonna be...
I'd like to have it advertised and put it into...
Oh, I understand, I'm just saying, when you go through this document, that's what you're gonna find.
...guidelines, uh, maybe a special meeting?
The other thing you'll find is the sign ordinance has been modified, it's gonna be slightly bigger than what it was previously, the reason for that is that there was no language in this plan to allow you to grant variances or deviations, so the only other change, other than the two things I just mentioned, is there's now language for you to grant minor variances or C variances if they are presented at some point in the future. Those are what, that's what you'll find when we review these documents, I use a strike-through format, everything is the same except for documents, or for lines or sentences that are struck through, and new language is added with it.
We'll be able to review that, thanks. And, uh, since we get the date...
Lois, when is the next, uh, you can do it at February, and be within the time period.
That would be excellent, so we can advertise it and, um, give us time to review it, would be satisfactory, would you agree?
If you're free to contact me, if you have any questions.
All right, thank you.
And we, we didn't mean to set your agenda, we just thought we would get it because of the timing of the council meeting, there, there's a lot of information here, so, we have the time to digest it. Thank you very much.
All right, do I have to adjourn?
You're in charge.
Do I have, uh, motion?
Second.
All right, you're adjourned.